Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Chuck's here.
He'll be back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're having this meeting tonight to kind of continue and do an update after the meeting we had last week. There was some discussion last week about what are we doing for the water and sewer system? And we pointed out that Newburyport Water owns the water system, Newburyport Sewer owns the sewer system down there. Newbury has no say on it as far as the operation and the management of it. What we've got is we've got some handouts, and I'm going to have these posted around town like around Plum Island and stuff. And we've got contact information if you've got a problem with the water or sewer, which you'd get on your bills anyway, okay? And the Department of Public Service Water Division, the contact is Kathy Tockington, the phone number is here. And then the Department of Public Service Sewer Division, the Commissioner is Dave Hanlon, he's the chair. There's a phone number here for the Newburyport City Hall. And the Ward One Counselor in Newburyport is Allison Hathquist, and she lives on Plum Island. It's unfortunate that there's no one in Newbury that's an elected representative on the city council up there, but Allison has been pretty good in the past on handling issues on the water and sewer because that's her backyard there. So I've got some handouts up here. If people want, they can take them and pass them around down there. It's not exactly the answers that people would like or that we have, but that's what it is. So the other thing that I want to talk about is I had some lengthy conversations with our state rep and our state senator over the weekend. And we're in a mode, it happened last year, it happened this year, we're reacting to some things that are out of our control, and we end up getting very angry at individuals, okay? It's the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs or the Commissioner of DEP. What we really need to try and work on are the regulations, okay? And Senator Ta was supposed to be here, he just called Jeff, and he's stuck in the State House. He was hoping to get here by around eight originally, but I guess it's snowing pretty hard in Boston right now.
It is still up on side of Rowley.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, so he said he wouldn't make it. But we are going to work with him and with Representative Mira's office and take a good look at the regulations that are holding us back from what you people would like to do with your properties down there. And I've been told that, you know, they're going to work with us, we're going to look and try and find something that's palatable for everybody. It's palatable by everyone means compromise. I look at the word compromises, you lose, okay, because you don't get your way on it. But that's how it's probably going to have to go. We've had some different, people come up with some different ideas way out of the box, might be good ideas. Chuck and I were just talking about, a gentleman said, why don't you take like all these sport fishing people and contact them and look into constructing an artificial reef off of Plum Island? It's a pretty big job, but maybe it's worth looking into, you know? I mean, there's all kinds of things, because if we had something like that, that would certainly trip up the waves rolling in and take away some of the energy. We've got people talking about, again, people don't realize the amount of work that town employees and town officials have put into. The big cry is retreat, okay? Well, FEMA and through MIMA has grant money available if someone wants to retreat and wants to sell their property. I don't know, like Martha, how many days have you spent on that?
Question.
Okay. Martha did, Chief Riley did, Doug Packer did, Sam was involved with it. And FEMA has a software program, and you plug in values, okay? And then the software goes to work, and it tells you if you're available for anything. There was nothing on Plum Island that qualified for any of those grants, okay? And a lot of it is the need to have repetitive claims, right Doug, you were involved with it?
You need to have it.
The purpose of performing the analysis is to come up with a benefit cost number, a benefit cost ratio. That has to be at least one to one to make it an attractive grant for the federal government. They need to get their money back. It was a couple of, where we didn't have a structure left, where you just had the land, you don't have a big value to plug into protection. So if the house has already gone down, it makes it very difficult. The elevation grant was quite difficult because of the changes in the insurance program. One gentleman found out that his insurance was going to go from hundreds of dollars a year to thousands of dollars a year and preferred to pay for elevation out of his own pocket.
Doug, before you leave though, I think to really emphasize what Joe was talking about, I think it was as long ago as maybe almost two years ago when you and I were looking at some of the thoughts that were coming out of, it was the Law Foundation or the EPA on a federal level about retreat. We started to first see that, was it two or three years ago?
Yeah, I think that you sent a document about rolling easements, or you brought it to my attention a couple of years ago.
So it's a good couple of years ago. So this is nothing new, but the only thing is, I think everyone has to be a little bit aware of, there was a first round of Sandy money that just went out, and a lot of that was for repairing and reinstalling hard structure. There's a second round of Sandy grant money that's out, and that's the money that Peter Pfeiffer and I are working on, that is for coastal resiliency, for stopping storm surge and letting also some of the water out to try to control flooding. And then we just had the governor's grant, you know, and a lot of that was a little bit... So what you see, I think, is a little mitigating of some of that hardness about retreat. So I think what Joe is saying is that I think the people, the town, and all of us, especially if we make it through this winter, should have a very busy summer trying to step forward and be proactive and try to put forth some, whether it be regulation change or looking at things in a, you know, a little different fashion. So I think what Joe said is important.
Dave, you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the regulation. Obviously, I've been a big proponent of that, that having read the current regulations backwards and forwards, they're great for protecting undeveloped barrier beaches, but they don't even address what to do. And I think going forward, if you look at the enabling legislation for the Wetlands Protection Act, a lot of this stuff comes under, you know, right at the top of the list is things like protecting water supply and so forth. And I think, you know, there's room for good regulations. The downside is regulations take time, they have to be drafted, you have to post them for public content, comments, you have to have public hearings and so on. So this is something we should start on now because it's going to take months, perhaps even years. In some cases, some of the things we have now in the Wetlands Protection Act took as much as 10 years. I'm thinking of the Rivers Protection Act, for example. So we've got to get started. I think we've got a lot of other coastal communities in Massachusetts that are thinking exactly the same thing. And, you know, if we all work together, you know, and start, again, working with Coastal Zone Management and DEP to start drafting some regulations as to how to deal with highly developed pieces of, you know, barrier beach islands, whether it be down in Situate or up here in Newbury, maybe we can make some progress. Because I think right now, you know, we're dealing with regulatory uncertainty and we're dealing with environmental uncertainty. And we're not going to be able to change the environment, but maybe we can change the regulations.
And once again, just to mirror what Dave said, I think, I think it's headed by Coastal Zone Management, but I won't go on record as absolutely, but, and Bruce is the one that's spearheaded, there's a coastal erosion task force that's being put together now. So there's a lot going on. I mean, I think it's the time for everyone to be very vigilant and diligent so that we can move forward, especially if we get a little bit of break and can get through the winter.
Do I need Mike?
Yep. You know, I think this is the way to go. And I think, I just want to, I hope we follow through on it, and both at the legislative level and our level, and also go with our federal people. And, but I definitely feel that the regulations got to be more friendly towards coastal communities and the people that live there, so that they can do what they have to do.
All right. Anyone got any questions on those comments? All right. Now, the other thing is, you've heard all the discussion we had on there are laws, the town can't break the law, et cetera, et cetera. What we can do, we can't do anything with hard structures because they're against the regulations. What we can do is sand, okay? That's not against the regulations. And Tracy sat down, and what we're going to do, if the board votes on it, but anyway, after talking to Tracy, we thought we could buy some sand, okay, and stockpile it at Olga Way parking lot, okay? And that sand can be used, if anyone has an emergency, it'll be right there, to be used. It'll be paid for, for what we think is, we have wiggle room, I wouldn't say wiggle room, we're confident that we have enough money to buy some sand out of the Betterment Fund, okay? And the Betterment Fund is for, you know, it was for the water and sewer and for the betterment of Plum Island, and it's a good use for that, okay? We want to be very cautious because we don't want to, at the end of the 20-year bond, have no money to pay off the bond payments. So what we talked about was starting out with $10,000. And we're going to buy $10,000 worth of sand and put it down there, and that'll be there if people have a problem, and it'll be very close to where we're going to need it. And we'll see what happens. And if we use it, then we could revisit it, okay? If we don't use it, then it's going to be a stockpile of sand. And that was one thing that the DEP has always had on a checklist, okay? They want to have a stockpile of sand available for an emergency. So this is something that, and I don't know, we'll go around the table and see how the board feels about it, I don't know.
I'm all for it.
I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Dave, oh, Jeff?
No, and I think, I think once again, the idea of having that in place, and I think the people that are going to the MRBA meetings know that there could be sand coming out of the Piscatawara River, it's a ways away, and it could be expensive. But I mean, sand management is still on the minds of a lot of people at the higher levels. And, you know, we've got sand where we don't want it. I mean, we've got sand in Essex that are stopping people from going out of their river with their boats, and we have sand right now in the Ipswich Park River confluence that is not where it's supposed to be. And obviously, we have sand in the jetties, but it's expensive to move, so that, it all leaves to be discussed and figured out.
Well, I guess, unlike Jeff's comment, I'm just going to kid you a little bit. You were talking about sand not being where it's supposed to be. I think the rivers decide where it's supposed to be, and we don't, it just gets in our way. But to get more serious for a minute, the one thing I'd like to address is that if we're going to go forward with this idea, is how we prioritize things. In other words, if we have a stockpile of sand and 12 people show up and they say they'd like some sand, who gets it first? Are they going to pay for it, are we going to give it away for free? Because after all, I mean, if this is coming from the Betterment Fund, then the major justification is protecting the sewer and water. So it seemed to me that the priority should go, and of course, we've got one lot in particular where the erosion's getting pretty close to the road. And so it seems to me we ought to at least have some kind of policy as to how we're going to prioritize the use of this sand if it's needed. And then secondly, what kind of reimbursement can the Betterment Fund get? Because, you know, I realize folks out there are having a hard time coming up with the money to protect their properties, but at the same time, we've got to remember what the Betterment Fund is for. It's not to protect houses, it's to protect water and sewer. And, you know, in some cases, we can do both at the same time. But I just would like to say that if I'm going to vote for this, I'd like to have some, at least something in our vote that starts outlining what the policy would be, knowing full well that going forward, we would have to refine that policy.
Comments on that?
Payback thing is going to be very difficult to, how do you know when they took it out? Who's going to monitor all of this? Whereas if you just allot the sand without the payback, it'd be a heck of a lot easier.
They've already paid for it once.
Yeah, so, you know, but the, I do see David's point very valid as far as the monitoring, where the sand's going to go, who's going to be first dibs, all of this stuff. Who is going to monitor that? It's a very good question.
We don't have anyone in place to do that.
Right.
Okay, you're going to hire someone and have them sit by the sand pile? That's what the problem would be, you're right.
Joe, the thing that comes to mind though, is one section down there that was hollowed out in this last storm. I don't know whose property it was, but, and that's getting pretty close to the water and sewer. And that would be, that has to be a top priority, and so we can protect the water and sewer at that area. So I don't know where we stand on that, or maybe...
It's private property. It's private property. So where we stand is, like everyone else that owns property down there, that's a particularly vulnerable spot at this point in time. It looks like within a few days, it may not, it may even be now, it looks to me most of the beachfront down there, well, you've been down there, right? Is most of it filling in now?
It's getting there, but that lot still hadn't had any attention done to it as the last time I was there.
It's gone worse. It's all you.
Oh, yeah. Last, last I heard, it was...
I was a lot behind it.
Okay, okay, that's why, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think we lost, that last one storm we had, someone told me we lost about a third of, you know, there was about a third gone. And that's something that's, you know, we're going to have this, this volume of sand available, and we'll be watching. I mean, you know...
The footprint of that house was that moved across the street in front of my house. It's all, it's all gone.
Yeah. Now, Doug had some pictures of it, that one of the people down there is doing a good job. And you can see some of the piece of the foundation from that house that's sticking out, that, that they did move across the street. Yeah. So it's something we have to watch, and by having the sand there...
The water actually changed during the last storm, because I was standing right there.
Oh, a couple places it did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But it may have been right there.
But getting back to what you're saying is, the betterment, where the money's coming from, is for the water and sewer. And this is a water and sewer problem, it's going to be, if it keeps going. So somehow, we've got to stop it, no matter, I don't know how we do it, I don't know if Doug has any suggestions, but...
Historically, this isn't the first time that we'll have done this. Because when it was getting close up at the center island, some of the money to build those sandbags came from the Betterment Fund, okay? So it's not, you know, we've done it, Tracy checked with town council on the legality of it and everything. And, you know, it's kind of, if it's used on Plum Island, isn't that what they said, Tracy?
As long as it's for the protection of the system.
Okay, yeah, so...
So I mean, when they decided to move the house across, I thought part of the agreement was that...
It'd be good if you came up to the microphone...
Yeah, come up to the mic. Dave's got a good point there.
So we've got folks at home watching.
This week, we got into that lot.
I was understanding last year when they moved the house across the street, that they gave up the rights to that property on that side of the street?
They still own it. They still own the property?
They do.
They still own the property.
Okay, was that part of the agreement? Because that was not the understanding that I had at the time.
Okay. Doug, you've been close to that.
They previously gone in and tried to permit putting a house in the position that the saved structure occupies now. The department said no, they didn't want a second home down there. But when their home was in jeopardy, the department allowed them to move it back across the street with the stipulation that the lot be deed restricted and conservation restricted, restricted so that it could no longer be built upon.
Okay, but...
But they still retain ownership?
The ownership, yeah.
Absolutely. They still have ownership of the lot.
Okay. But the confusion probably is that they can't build on it, and there's restrictions on what they can do on it.
That I understood, that they wouldn't be able to build it again.
Yeah.
But I thought they actually, that the DEP or somebody was taking over, and then when they put grass on it and make it a nice...
You know, honestly, honestly, who wants to take it? Who wants to assume that liability? Right? That's a prob, you know, whoever takes it over is responsible, and it's a liability thing if it isn't maintained properly and washes over. So you're right. I think that, has the, have you been in, do you know the owners, the current owners at all?
We've all been up on that one.
Okay, all right. I think people have been talking to them, but I think you can't tell people to spend money that they may or may not have to do something, you know?
I just kind of spent a conversation with them about putting the rocks there, like they have in the others. I don't think they've been agreeable with that.
Well, you know, if it does break through there, what's, where's it going to go? And also where they move theirs, too?
Yeah, but theirs is on stilts, mine isn't. Theirs is far much higher than mine is. Mine is lower than the dune.
Yeah, yeah.
So mine is, it's gone. It goes over that...
Just curious, did you look into the FEMA grants for raisin yards at all? No, I'm just, just curious, I'm like, where you might have, or might not have fallen on that, that's all.
I haven't looked into that, also because for some reason, our house doesn't require blood insurance. On the new FEMA match, I don't, so I'm not asking, so I don't know quite.
Yeah, okay.
Joe, I'd like to sort of bring the conversation back to the chink in the armor question that I think is really on everybody's mind, right? That we had a couple weak places in the riprap, and it seems like good progress is being made on the Bennett Hill end, and now we've got this hole in the middle that we've got to deal with. And obviously, the town doesn't want to get involved in doing work on private property normally, but we do have examples where there's easements to maintain fire ponds and other kinds of infrastructure. And if the proprietors were willing, would it make sense for us to get some kind of easement just to maintain that riprap? You know, what I'm hoping is, we know in the long term, riprap isn't going to hold up against the ocean, but in the short term, it seems to work reasonably well. And in the past, the beaches started building back out again from these problem areas. So it seems to me that if the riprap can keep the sea at bay for a few years, maybe luck will be on our side, and that area will start building back out like it did after the erosion in the 70s and like we've seen north of center. But if we don't patch that hole in the armor, so to speak, then, you know, the waves are going to continue getting through, eroding closer to the road, getting around behind the riprap that other folks have put in place. So it seems to me that somehow collectively, between the town and the property owners on Plum Island, we've got to plug that hole. It's kind of like the little Dutch boy sticking his thumb in the dike, only we've got a big hole. And that's the kind of thing that just concerns me over the next few years if we don't find a way of plugging that gap, so I don't know.
That's what I was talking about. That's what he's saying, exactly what I was saying.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, again, you know, it seems to me the way we would have to do it would be some, through some kind of easement, like we do for some of these other things and subdivisions and so forth, to provide, so the town has legal access to the infrastructure that they would be maintaining. So I don't know, Tracy or Martha has any thoughts on that?
Well, we can certainly pursue a conversation with the property owner to do something like that, but then you would be engaging in illegal activity and putting...
Well, yeah, I mean, I realize there's another level of risk, but I'm trying to get, see, you know, there would be several steps. And also, I think, you know, the, sometimes you have to take a little bit of risk to make progress. I don't want to take a lot of risk, you know, and, but I'd like to just see whether this is even a feasible option, aside from the question of whether, you know, what kind of legal exposure we would have if we went, went forward on it.
I think, I think David is articulating what's always been or has been on everyone's mind. If there was an easy answer, we probably would have already done it. So I think the fact of trying to decide if it's possible to gain access, I think we probably already know we can gain access. But I think it's going to be whether the town can actually continue to put in hard structure, because we have never done it. And the property owners and people protecting their homes have, but now we're talking about infrastructure, so it is a little bit of a change. I am surprised that you're the only people that I've really seen that are cognitive of the fact that there is a direct influence with the water breaking through that to all the homes that are down. I mean, if you stand on Annapolis Way, you're probably looking almost in a lot of second story windows.
Absolutely.
So, I mean...
It's several houses in that area.
I mean, if funding becomes a direct issue, would that be maybe an answer, that people really decide maybe collectively to raise the funds, to maybe start to work on that part of the chink in the armor? Because it's all those homes that are definitely going to have some exposure, I don't know. So I think that, you know, Dave's getting right close to the bone on where we need to go. But, I mean, I think this board, you know, Douggy's advised us, and we certainly have some silent advice from other areas, that the town would be really pushing its envelope legally if we get in the rock business. I mean, we've been in the bag business and the sand business, but town getting in the rock business is...
Well, it is, like you said, to protect the infrastructure, which changes the scenario slightly, in terms of how you...
And you know what? I think if we are you, or if we wait, I mean, the longer we wait, the easier, it's going to be harder, it's going to be to stabilize that area.
The other thing that may come out is, there's some new faces here. The last meeting, Tracy and Doug and Sam met with the report. They met with the Newburyport water people and sewer people, okay, about at what point you're going to do what, okay? And that's about what is, when is this going, if this happens, then we'll do this. If this happens, we'll do that, whatever. And they are in the process of drawing up a procedure, protocol, whatever we want to call it, okay? At which, if something happens, how they're going to react to it. And they're going, there'll be another meeting, and they're also going to have public meetings, okay, and explain to the people what their plans are. As a result of that, we don't know what's going to come out of it. Anything from doing nothing to armor in the shoreline could come out of it, but it's probably going to be someplace in the middle, you know? And so that's another positive thing. It's not happening this week in time for tonight's storm, all right? But I don't know if anyone's been around down there, but Newburyport Water and the Public Services Department have been down there a lot lately. I know a couple places where they've dug holes in the street to find out where the pipe is, okay? And they're making a plan from these things, all right? They, they're trying to identify spots where they could shut off. They've already identified and put in some gates to shut off some of the areas down there, where they, I believe it's the Annapolis Way neighborhood, but I'm not sure, okay? But anyway, they're making plans, and they're going to look at, if things happen, what they're going to do to react to it. So we can hope for that, for good to come out of that. You know, again, it's, you know, you people living down there, and you're under the gun.
Greg Sawyer, I own a piece of property on Fordham Way. I think that what we need to do is we need to get permission from the property owner to do some work on their property. And then we need to figure out that our houses in the back are in as much trouble as the houses in the front, and take up a collection to protect... protect your house by, by filling in the gap on the houses in the front. And if we were to work together on that, and realize that as soon as it comes through, the next street's down, and this is retreat at its most utmost, that they'll just shut off the valves, and then nobody can live in their houses. So, and that's what the plan's probably gonna be. Well, okay, we shut off Annapolis Way, we shut off Fordham Way, and then no one can live in any of those houses until it comes further, or until something happens. So I think it's important that the neighbors who feel threatened, which we all should feel threatened, but in particular, get together, start talking to your other neighbors, and say, "Look, we gotta plug this hole. If they're not gonna do it, we gotta do it to save our own homes."
And what Greg just described is what happened at Bennett Hill. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened at Bennett Hill. And I think what Greg just described is what all the homeowners on the coastal edge did for everyone on Plum Island when they protected their house, as we said last year. Every one of those homeowners that spent their money to protect their homes protected the island's infrastructure. So what Greg said, might be time for the people, however many 200 homes there are behind there, to maybe step up to the plate and help these people that protected their infrastructure.
Let's sort of follow up on that. A lot of this has to do with the DEP's interpretation of their regulations, right? That if you actually followed the letter of the law, you basically can't do anything to a dune, even if it's eroding away. At the same time, you know, I'm hearing from you, Joe, that sand is probably okay, but rocks aren't. But rocks by themselves, if they're not backed up by a dune, aren't gonna stand up very well. Perhaps, again, you know, if the folks out on the island get together and put the rocks in place, and we supply the sand to create the artificial dune behind it, maybe that's something that keeps the legal exposure of the town to a minimum, and at the same time accomplishes the goal that I think everyone wants to achieve with that particular gap.
And it just so happens that the sand might be in place there, very close, so...
Mr. Chair.
The other thing is, does anyone in this room have any contact with the people that own the lot? What we need, what?
Gary Richfield.
Okay.
He talks to us.
Does he? Okay. Okay, can, so, can you go back and, it may be up to you people to get the neighborhood people together and figure out what it would be, and what you have to do. And then let Gary talk to the homeowner, okay? And...
Joe, we also have a problem on Fordham Way...
Yeah.
Where the water has breached twice already, and it's just, we're waiting for the next one.
Yeah.
And we have the same situation. I've contacted one of the homeowners today, who said that he was okay with doing something on his property, but he still hasn't gotten paid for the loss of his home, so he is therefore in no position or mindset to pay for any more than what he's already paid for.
Yeah.
And I got phone calls into the other property owners. But, you know, it's, we're just, we're just waiting until it's gonna come our way as soon as it, something goes wrong. So we're, we're in the same situation, and we need the same sort of backing from the neighborhood, and then the sand behind it to shore it up.
Yeah, no, and I think that, and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna move along, too, Greg. It's time, you know, next year, it's gonna be someplace else, and whatever. And if we think, my feeling is, if I lived down there, I would look at, I think that the Decine Coast property is kinda low-hanging fruit, I guess, as far as, you know, I would suggest that, let's get that done, and then we start working on the, down, down Fordham, because it appears that up in Annapolis is more immediate to me, but driving by, okay? Do people agree that, you know? So if you can get Gary to talk to the property owner, and if you can talk to your neighbors, and talk to, talk to a contractor, this contractor's down there working now, and find out, what's a good number to put together for the rock wall? You know, they know how much stone goes into it, the proper size of the stone, that, I think they're putting a lot bigger stone in this time, from what I've seen. I haven't seen anything, excuse me, but, you know? And they can tell you, okay, we've got, most of the property's down there, what, 50 feet?
Probably 70 or 80.
70, but whatever, but I mean, these contractors can tell you how much per foot to build it, and then you know where you've gotta go. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so, again, like, local government, it's going, you know, it goes back to the people. The people, you know, at town meeting, it's the people that run the government. And this is going back to you people, because Jeff's explained, we've talked about how kind of our hands are tied on this. It's awkward, okay? So... And I think, I think that whole loop, even down in front of Fordham Way, that the sewer is on the ocean side, right?
Yeah.
You don't even have... The whole Plum, the whole Plum Island is. Northern Boulevard. A waiting, you know, I wish water was on that side, you know? Northern Boulevard's the same thing, you know? So, anyway.
Yeah, Joe, I think one thing we have to realize, though, is that riprap is a temporary measure. If the beach doesn't build up, build back out again, it's not gonna hold up forever. I mean, we've already seen some examples of that, and, you know, if you're really gonna harden it forever, you've gotta build what's called a revetment, and that's a fairly complicated process. You know, you're putting fines, finer stone behind the big stone, you've gotta protect the top, you gotta protect the bottom, so the water doesn't get underneath it. And we're talking a lot bigger bucks than a bunch of stone. But as I say, it seems like the beach is like the tides. The tides come and go twice a day, the beach comes and goes about every 30 years. And so if the riprap can hold us off, hold things off for a few years, okay, if the beach builds back out again, we're home free for another 30 years. And that's, I think that's what we've gotta hope for, because otherwise, we're talking really serious expense, I think, to build revetments along that, that whole stretch of coast there. But, you know, what we've seen, you know, as I pointed out, we've seen it north of the center there, you know, we had houses in trouble not so long ago, and now there's tons of beach out in front of them. And, you know, those sandbars that are sitting there offshore, you know, they're moving around, and if you're lucky, they'll come ashore down by your place, and we'll be okay for another 20 or 30 years. So that's, I think, we just gotta bet on that working out, or otherwise, we're having, we're gonna have to go to kind of an expense that I think would be very hard for any of the property owners to, to deal with.
All right, what we've gotta do is, some, make a motion on starting out with $10,000 worth of sand, and we'll see where that goes, and that'll be available for up there, or if someone else has an emergency. And then if we need that, then we'll come back to the table again. And so, motion?
Motion moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
I just wanna add that I think we need some kind of monitoring. I know we can't have somebody sitting out there 24/7, but if someone shows up with a front-end loader and a couple of dump trucks, someone's gonna notice. And, you know, that's the kinda thing that, we need to have some control over it, so it goes to protect the infrastructure, and not to sort of landscape somebody's backyard.
One other thing, I don't wanna be redundant, but at that breach, where it's closest to the water and sewer, if we do something about it now, you know, everybody together, we have a chance. But if they have to, if the worst happens, and we lose the water and sewer there, I'd say you're gonna have about 20 or 30 homes that are gonna be dead homes, nobody's gonna be able to limit them. So I, I hope, you know, that we can, with Newburyport and us and...
And the homeowners, the property owners down there.
We could get something going.
Yeah, okay. And I think the atmosphere right now is, is in the most optimal time to try to accomplish that. David's point about monitoring it and whatever, is difficult.
I can talk with the DPW director and see what options we have.
We can post it. Do not remove any of this without contacting...
Sort of the honor system, that people have to make a request in order to take some sand.
Yeah, we can post to put a sign on it, you know? And that's... But now, I gotta discuss one thing, so we all are on the same page. I applaud what David's saying, because it sounds like how you should do it. But I think it's, I mean, I'm just wondering, and sand is hard to replace, but I would certainly hate to shut a homeowner off if, if he was able to throw some sand behind some rock before his wall tumbled in and saved his house, too. So, I mean, I gotta tell you, I don't, you know... We're gonna post it. Yeah. Okay. In an emergency, people do what they have to do to protect their property, okay?
Right, and I think, and we leave it to the DPW to do the best they can under the circumstances.
And Tim lives down there, so, you know, all right. Can we have a vote? All in favor of allocating $10,000 for establishing a sand pile in Olga Way?
We say not more than $10,000.
Well, yeah, okay.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor? All right, now, I have another announcement. We got that out of the way, that's really the business we had. Chuck Beard just called. He's gotta go snowplow, and he just got called, okay? So that's the bad news for everyone, they're calling him out to plow snow.
I gotta run.
Okay, there was one other thing we brought up. I don't know if you need a motion for that, but do you need a motion to approach our legislative delegation to go after this regulation change?
It's being done right now.
Okay.
Okay, Bruce would have been here with the steps we needed tonight, had it not been for his delay, okay? He's got his staff putting together the roadmap for that to happen.
That's gonna take time, but I'll tell you, I really wanna follow through on that.
Yeah.
That's probably the most important thing.
Yeah.
I agree. Every winter, we panic, and every summer, we forget about it.
I don't, I don't want to be in that position again.
Greg, I saw you rethinking things. Was there something that we should know to fine tune, something?
No, I was just thinking about this, this whole thing...
Run up, run up, run up there.
You know, the fact of how do we regulate the sand? I mean, you just gotta make it, somebody's gotta come and ask permission to take the sand before, you know, before they...
That's, that's a real good idea.
Yeah, it's as simple as that. Just you can't go in there and start hauling it out. I'm sure it'll be noticed, but it's, you know, we've gotta be on the honor system somehow. You gotta go and ask before you can start hauling the sand.
I, I think that's a good point, Greg. And also, I think the residents of Plum Island know the importance of it, and you guys are gonna be watching it. So who's the contact person to ask?
Tim, I guess.
DPW.
We'll get that set up. We'll get a phone number, we'll post it out there, so residents can contact.
Ma'am, you win.
I, I...
Could you come up and, I'm slack, I'm not picking on you, but I should do it to everyone.
I just feel foolish, because mine's a little minor, but I'm Darcy Johnson, I actually live on Olga Way. And the reason I actually came, because I actually am willing to do whatever we can as residents of Plum Island to the people that are more in jeopardy than we are, so I wanna say that. But I also wanna say that Olga Way, we got terribly flooded in this last storm, and ever since the grading was done on the town property, the water rolls right into our house. Now, we're on stilts, so it rolls under our house, but we've had to move our cars. So I just wanna ask, and I'm sorry, it's so minor, but if we're gonna put piles of sand there, if somebody could just take a look to see how the water's gonna run off, because otherwise, our, you know, we're gonna flood every time. So I would just like that to be taken into consideration. And I'm happy to monitor the sand, if you wanna give me a tax rebate, I'm right there. So I take photos, I'll do whatever.
That's, that's good, we have Doug and Tim look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Tracy agreed it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other ideas? That's where we're at.